All right, time is six thirty. We'll get started. Before we begin, this is a reminder that this is also a remote meeting and teleconference using Zoom pursuant to one MRSA Section 403-A. Welcome to the Sanford Planning Board Meeting of May first, 2024. The meeting will now come to order. This is a public proceeding, and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all the exhibits that are offered. Please notify the chair if you're unable to hear or see something. Please note that if the planning board members, if any planning board members have potential conflicts of interest of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or action on an application. All persons speaking will be asked to state your name and address and then proceed. At the sole discretion of the chair, public testimony may be limited to five minutes per speaker. For each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project. Thereafter, the chair will ask for the proponents of the project to speak, followed by opponents, and then those who are neither for nor against, but who may want to ask a question or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have an opportunity to speak to the board through the chair. Any questions must go to and through the chair, who will then decide at what point to either ask staff or the applicant to respond. The chair may wait until after testimony is concluded to seek answers to any questions that are raised by the public or board members. Please note that rudeness, uncivil behavior, clapping, cheering, booing, et cetera, will not be tolerated. And if these behaviors occur, the chair, the chair at his sole discretion may terminate the hearing and reschedule for another date. In addition, the chair at its sole discretion will limit repetitious comments, though it's entirely appropriate for the, for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with the previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the chair will ask if there are any new comments, and then the applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to the testimony which was provided. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the chair will accept no additional public comment. However, a member of the board, of the chair's discretion may ask the applicant or a member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen public comment. Planning board decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal laws. In this regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impacts of a project in light of Sanford subdivision, site plan, shore land, or zoning ordinances, and other relevant regulations. After the board discusses the merit of each project, it will vote on written findings of fact. Since the findings may substantially affect any appeals rates and also as a matter of courtesy, the board asks that those attending the meeting not leave until the board has adopted the findings for the project you are interested in. After the planning board makes its final, final decision, any reconsideration by the board must be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting. If anyone wishes to appeal the board's final decision, he or she must do so within thirty days. The city's ordinance and comprehensive plan are available for viewing on the city's website and in the planning development department's office at nine nineteen Main Street. Remember, this is a public proceeding. You have the right to hear and see what is happening, and we welcome public participation. Right, we have no minutes tonight, so we'll move right into new business. This is a public hearing for file number J thirty dash thirty, nineteen Bodwell Street. Jamie, do you want to get us oriented on this, please?
So if you guys recall, about seven or eight months ago, this came before you guys for approval. This is an infill lot on Bodwell Street. It used to house a church about ten years ago. It caught fire. It was torn down. It was a vacant lot owned by the city for a while. They got approval when it came time to start construction. They realized that the size building they chose wasn't the right size. So this approval is basically to shrink the building down a little bit. It's still the same amount of units. Really, the only change is the building is a little bit shorter. They took what was built in, turned it into more grass, and moved the sidewalk up to be closer to the building now that the addition, well, it was kind of a little smaller section of the building, so I call it the addition, but the building is shrink. Other than that, nothing has changed on this project. Went to site plan and came out of site plan with just a few minor conditions which they've already addressed. So I believe it's ready for you guys.
Is the applicant here?
I don't believe the applicant is here or on Zoom. But there is somebody on Zoom.
I can watch here if you need more.
I guess I'll open the public hearing in just a moment, but just one question. What, it's shrunk lengthwise, right? Is that what you said?
It shrunk lengthwise. So the building is, is oriented, so it's narrower against the road and longer into the lot. Previously, it had this exact shape, and then on the back, it, it had a little, what looked like an addition, but it was, oh, there it is right there. That's, that's the old design.
This portion will not be here anymore, and then they've basically just moved, there was a path because there was a doorway on this far side. They've just kind of moved the path back closer to this building.
Well, didn't they cut out the two-bedroom apartments?
They are now proposing all one bedrooms instead. That's, that's how they're fitting the eight units still in the building with just all one bedrooms instead of a mix. Correct.
All right, thanks for clarification. All right, I'll now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone either on the phone or in the room who would like to speak in, as a proponent to this project? Anybody on Zoom or in the room that would like to speak in opposition to this project or this amendment? Anyone who would like to ask a question or make a comment about this application? Any final comments? All right, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and the board will now take it up for discussion.
If somebody could refresh my memory, if this is the same project I'm thinking of, is this the one where the, the occupants are going to be owning the units?
Yes.
Yes, so they are going after some state funding that is for affordable housing homeownership. So they are set up as condos. They have updated their condo docs. That was one of the conditions coming out of the August approval. And they made the condo docs from the draft that they had previously submitted to. The current draft is much improved, and I don't see, foresee any issues with it. It covers the roofs, the parking area, the stormwater, basically all the common elements, fire service. Everything should be fine, covered under that agreement. And they did call out in the agreement that there'd be one space assigned per unit. So that was part of the original parking waiver that we had requested.
Would there be assigned parking spaces?
Yep, one, one per unit.
Well, I mean, will they be assigned per unit, like designated parking spaces?
I think how it's worded in the HO docs is that technically the association owns all of the parking spaces and that they can be rented per unit based on a annual fee set by the board. And so then they would be assigned at that point. Because if you're renting something and you're paying for it.
That makes sense.
Yeah, you're gonna have it be assigned.
And how does that work for handicap parking that's assigned?
I think we had them put one handicap in because there was, is there ten spaces? Eight, nine? There's only nine. They actually didn't even need to put a handicap space in. There is, they are showing one, so.
They would assign it to the tenant that needed it the most, I guess.
Thank you.
Did you have more, Lenny?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, are they still keeping the provisions for some electric vehicle hookups? I think I remember that as being part of the original plan.
I don't believe there's any chargers shown on the site plan. I think that was discussed early on in it, but that hasn't hit the site plan yet. I imagine that if in the future that becomes something they want to do, that'll be probably a minor amendment. That, that was briefly discussed, but it never made the plans.
Any other comments or questions by the board? All right.
I just think it would be really nice if the applicants attended these meetings, whether on Zoom or in person.
I would agree typically they do. They, they were made aware of both meetings. I'm not sure why they're not here, but I would agree that that is standard practice.
Just simple, but I noticed in the, the water district asked if this, said the service line to the adjacent property seventeen Bodwell Street is not shown on the site plan. Please add that service to the plan. I didn't look at the plan. Was that included?
Yes, that was a correction that they made in between site plan and today. It was added. The water district verified they were satisfied with the.
As far, I read through the rest of the comments, and I don't think there were anything else outstanding from what I was reading.
No, it was, it was a pretty easy amendment. Again, it really, they just shortened the building, added some more grass, which helped the whole thing anyways.
And there's no issue with the size of the building from, all right.
Any other comments or questions to the board? All right, do we have findings?
Yep.
Sure do. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven A utilization of the site. The standard is met because the proposed site plan reasonably uses the site.
A motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Two eighty, I'm sorry, did you say it?
Yeah, six zero.
Thank you. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven N solid waste disposal. This condition is met because solid waste is proposed to be collected on site and removed by a private contractor.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero.
Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven Q technical and financial capacity. The standard is met because the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero.
Our first group. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven B access to the site. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven C access into the site. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven D internal vehicular circulation. And two eighty dash sixteen dash seven E pedestrian circulation. These standards have been met because the development will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero.
Group two. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven F stormwater management. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven G erosion control. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven H water supply. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven I sewage disposal. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven J utilities. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven K natural features. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven L groundwater protection. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven M exterior lighting. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven O landscaping. And two eighty dash sixteen dash seven R buffering. These standards have been met because the applicant has provided adequate provisions to meet the standards and any requested alterations from the site plan review committee.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero.
Group three. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven P shoreline relationship. And two eighty dash sixteen dash seven S airport encroachment. These standards are not applicable. The applicant is not proposing any development. This standard is not applicable.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero.
And I do have a suggested motion?
Please.
The planning board accepts the information in the April thirtieth, twenty twenty four summer report, grant the requested waivers, and finds the proposed minor site plan and minor subdivision for application J thirty dash thirty to construct an eight-unit condo building, a free stand-on single-family dwelling, and associated site improvements at nineteen Bodwell Street has satisfied the requirements of Article sixteen of the zoning ordinance and Article six of the subdivision ordinance, subject to the submission of information and conditions described below. And the only condition is standard conditions of approval number two, performance guarantee number four, signed recorded plat, number five, state agency permits slash approvals, number six, inspection free escrow, number seven, pre-construction meeting, number eight, landscaping performance guarantee, and number nine, alteration of plans.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero. All right, moving on to the second new business item, public hearing for file number K thirty-one dash nine sixteen West Elm Street. Jamie, can you orient us on this, please?
So this is a, the first of our density bonus provisions that were recently amended in the RD zone. This is a situation that had an existing two-unit house on it, and then there was a detached, single-family home in the backyard. It went vacant for more than a year, so it had lost its legally nonconformant status. So previously, it was in the single-family residential zone, which wouldn't allow it, that, that back dwelling unit to be reutilized. With the recent changes, that has changed. So they are now coming in for the density bonus to be able to turn that back into a, a dwelling unit to be lived in instead of just a storage building. This one did go to site plan review committee yesterday. We had actually sped up the process on this one because on the surface it, it appeared to be fairly simple. At site plan, the fire department brought up an access concern into the lot. If Aaron pulled up the picture, but the driveway for, for unit A and unit C is on the, the lower end of the screen, the right-hand portion of the property. It's, it's not very wide currently, and there isn't enough land to make it too much wider. The fire chief brought up some concerns about access to be able to get the fire and, and rescue apparatus into the backyard. Unfortunately, he was not able to attend the site plan yesterday, and he was not able to communicate with the owner. I believe the owner is in the audience tonight. So I actually am going to ask to table this item until the owner and the fire chief can get together to try to resolve the access concerns of the fire department.
Should we, since we announced the plan, the site, the public hearing, still hold the public hearing tonight?
I would say hold the public hearing.
Okay.
And then table it after the public hearing, yes.
All right, does the applicant want to speak? Okay. All right, any other comments by staff before we open this public hearing? Okay. Now to clear the public hearing open, if there's anybody who would like to speak on behalf of this project? Either in the room or on Zoom? All right, anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this project? Anyone who would like to ask a question or make a comment? All right, I'll declare the public hearing closed and pick it up for planning board discussion or entertain any tabling.
Yes. Actually, to the, to the owner, so the, the concern from the fire department was the width of the driveway, wanting to go to twenty, eighteen to twenty feet. And so you're, the challenge is you don't have that width. Is that probably the concern that you're gonna work out with the fire department?
If, if you're gonna speak to the board, just because of being on the record, we have to have you come up to the podium.
Yeah, that's correct. He was, his concern was he wanted it to be twenty feet wide or so. There's no way to do that to the best of my knowledge. I don't know if there's gonna be a workaround as far as a sprinkler system or, or what he's gonna say. Maybe he just needs to come out and, and see the actual property or.
Is there a standard that requires a driveway to be a certain width? Because even if there is a concern and there is no standard, can we actually hold?
So in NFPA one, which is fire code, there is provisions for access. There is no magic number because depending on the width of the main road where you turn off from, if there's room for a truck to kind of do this, you don't need it quite as wide. So in our ordinance, there is nothing saying you have to have X amount of width. In fire code for access management, there is, yes.
And that, and that falls to, in city of Sanford, to the fire chief?
Correct.
So I don't think this is dead. I think we just need to have him weigh in on this.
And, and I spoke a little bit with the property owner yesterday. I think there is a way to resolve it, probably not with a twenty-foot wide driveway because he doesn't own twenty feet of, twenty feet of width. But this is, this is not the first driveway that's too narrow and certainly won't be the last. But there are, NFPA one does give alternative methods to achieve fire protection. He brought up sprinkler systems. That might be a solution. That's, that's, I don't want to put words in chief's mouth, so I don't want to put words in his mouth. We have approved other projects with driveways that were not wide enough with the addition of a sprinkler system being installed. That, that has happened in the past.
Thanks. Todd, you good with that?
Yeah, that's all I read was the only, the biggest concern, so I just wanted to confirm.
Motion to.
Table.
Table. Until, until the discussion between the owner and the fire chief.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor of tabling? Six zero. Thank you. Good luck. All right, new business for public hearing, or it's a public hearing, an amendment of the zoning ordinance allowing excavation businesses as a principal use in the rural residential zone and rural mixed-use zones.
I'll let Erin do most of the talking. She's done all the work. We, we brought this up about a month or so ago. She's now just codified some of that original discussion. Some of these numbers are still up for discussion. We, we picked some numbers out of just generic comments that were made last time, but the numbers are there just as placeholders. We, we want you guys to, to make sure that you're comfortable with the numbers, but this, this is just now codifying what we started a month or so ago.
Yep, so just to reorient you, we've been discussing the possibility of allowing excavation contracting businesses as a principal use as opposed to as an accessory use, accessory to a single-family residential home in the RR and RMU zones. It is currently permitted in the industrial business and airport development zones. It is permitted with review in the industrial reuse zone, and it is currently a conditional use in the urban zone. So for whatever reason, a while back, I guess, when the table of land uses was determined, for the rural residential and rural mixed-use zones, excavation contracting businesses were only allowed if they were accessory to a single-family home. In our discussion and staff's opinion, there's not really a basis for necessitating it to be accessory to a single-family home, but we could understand the board wanting to make it a conditional use. So that would make it a conditional use in the urban zone, the rural residential, and the rural mixed-use zones. And in that vein, I came up with some draft provisions for conditional use. This is at the start here, the overarching conditions for conditional use that apply to all conditional uses. And then further down in that ordinance, we do call out specific uses. And so in this case, we have added one as an excavation contracting businesses. As an overview, we had talked about requiring a frontage along a numbered highway for the parcel. So that would be Route four, eleven A, ninety-nine, one oh nine, two oh two, or two twenty-four. I've also added in, including any roadway that becomes designated as a numbered highway or state route following adoption of this ordinance. That's something that we could discuss. This includes Main Street technically. But that was what we had talked about last time was a numbered highway needs frontage. So if we want to restrict one of those highways or restrict an area, we'll need to talk about that. The minimum lot size, we had discussed ten acres. That could be less, that could be more. That's up to you all as well. And then a minimum setback, any parking or staging areas used for equipment storage shall be located with a minimum setback distance of a hundred feet from the property line of a residential use. So it's specifically not from a commercial use, just if there is a residential abutter. And then there's some more provisions there unless the residential use is owned by the excavation contracting business or an easement with any residential abutter along the property lines where the required setback cannot reasonably be met, stating the excavation contracting business is allowed to operate within the required setback is signed and recorded at the York County Registry of Deeds. So that would be a larger setback or buffer from a residential use. And then for any other use, there's also the additional buffering statute at the end that all outdoor staging or parking areas for equipment used by the excavation contracting business is buffered by a vegetated buffer, a minimum of fifteen feet high and thirty feet wide. Unless the planning board would like to request a larger buffer for noise remediation. All of those numbers are up for debate, discussion.
So are there any businesses besides excavation contracting businesses that this previous disordinance affects?
Not that this ordinance affects. So if you want to see what the initial, this is our standard. This is what's currently in place for conditional uses. So again, we have this first set here under A that applies to all conditional uses. And then you come down here and there's some other things that are called out. Nonprofit surface organization, horse shows, antique stores, commercial schools. There's also a solar provision. It's not, I think it's just not formatted correctly, basically, but there is a solar provision up here as well, so. It's not the only use that would have a special set of conditions attached to it, if that's your question, Jack.
All right, thank you. Any other staff comments before we open public hearing on this? All right, declare the public hearing open. If there's anyone who would like to speak as a proponent of this ordinance change, either online or in the room? Right, anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Anyone who would like to ask a question or make a general comment? Right, any last holdouts that would like to speak? All right, declare the public hearing closed, and we'll discuss it at the board.
All right, I have a question and a proposed change.
Okay.
What qualifies as an excavation business? Do you own an excavator? Because the reason I'm asking is because there's a lot of businesses that have multiple lines of business. Whereas you'd be into logging and have excavation, or you're concrete and excavation. So those other businesses, does this apply to them as well?
So it would fall under the definition of our ordinance of excavation or general contractor. That's what it falls under. I can look up that definition right now.
But so it's not just excavation. I mean, it basically, because, I mean, there's multiple businesses with large amounts of equipment, excavation, concrete, and logging.
Yeah, again, it's excavating, general contractor. That's how it's worded in the ordinance. I'll pull up the definition of that just so I don't remember exactly what it says.
Yep. And I know we had talked about whether it being on a numbered highway and the size. And my personal opinion is if we limit it to the numbered highway, I would move it back down to five. Because I do feel like five acres is adequate, only because using my own lot as a example, that does not qualify for this. But the other thing is, you know, even without being on numbered highways, an excavation business is not gonna likely put a business on a road that's posted. So that eliminates a bunch of roads. You know, because if you have to deal with spring posting, you don't want an excavation.
Your equipment's trapped.
You're trapped, you're trapped.
That's a good point.
I guess my only comment on that is the comp plan that we're working under currently, albeit a little bit outdated, does try to keep the rural areas rural. So the more businesses we allow anywhere in those zones, we're kind of not following that, that provision of the now slightly antiquated comp plan. Whereas we, my thought on the numbered highway was our numbered highways in the rural zones have already become commercialized over the years. So I don't. So I don't think we're doing any detrimental harm to the rural zones by allowing them on the numbered highway. I don't think we're going to change the rural character because a lot that fronts on a highway doesn't have a lot of rural character. So that's just my opinion.
So I think that actually further emphasizes what Jace just said, so I think that's, right, you're, you're saying it should be on numbered highway, because why would you not, and risk it, your equipment being trapped because of the road being posted?
I'm sorry, I thought he was saying, he, he didn't think it had to be only on a numbered highway.
No, I'm saying you go either way, but I, I'm okay with it being on numbered highway, it makes sense, but I still like, again, mini excavators, many, you know, smaller equipment becoming more popular, not requiring a huge business, I mean, building.
Or a huge lot.
Yeah.
So we also have another provision of the ordinance called a home occupation-
Correct.
-designed for those small, one-man landscaping band or, or whatnot. So we have a provision already in the ordinance for the, for the small, 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 this was more for the, the, the large.
Would that be by business license, that we would determine that it's an excavating or general contractor business? How would we determine which?
So it, it really depends on how the owner of the business is proposing it. So we have home occupation standards, if, if they feel they can fall under home occupation standards, then it could potentially be a home occupation. One of the home occupation standards says no outdoor storage of equipment. Alex wants to speak.
So we also, we also have the provision for the general contractor and excavator on an owner-occupied lot-
Lot, so.
So in addition to the single family, so I think to keep that in mind, like, one of the situations we're in is because the business was attached to the single family that they lived in, they then sold the house, split off the business and kept it, so that's where I think that the rural issues come up and why we want to keep the numbered highway. So like, you start your business, it's allowed because you fall under that five-acre provision for the accessory use to a single family, which is great, because if it's your house and your family's there, right, you're, you're keeping attention to the noise and what time you start, and your neighbors, because you live there. If you don't live there anymore, you've started this business, you then split off the house and sell it, and now you don't care as much because you're not there, you run your business, you leave for the day, the neighbors then deal with the aftermath. So I think it's the people that start out small and then grow, and then we can run into the issues on the roads that aren't built for this use, and we want to kind of hug the numbered highways.
And we're not proposing removing that, that accessory provision.
Yeah, I mean, it just, it kind of pissed me off, I, I'm not an excavation company, I'll just say that flat out. My house is in town, I have a five-acre lot out of town, I'll probably own the lot across the road where my house will go. I have a barn across the road and a five-acre field, and I can't store my excavator, or tractor, or any of the equipment, that now I'm classified as an excavation business.
If you're not a business, you're not a business.
Right.
You can have an excavator for five years.
I'm saying if I was, if I did it, you know, became a business.
No.
Yeah, that's, that's what it's for.
And again, the acreage number is up for debate, that, that's up to you guys.
No, I'm just saying, like, in rural area, have plenty of land, have a small, small excavator, a truck, trailer, and the town's telling me I can't store it in a barn on a five-acre lot?
So in a barn you could, we have a home occupation thing that says you can store it indoors.
But my house isn't on the lot. It's across the road on a separate lot.
Right.
Close the door in the barn, nobody will see.
Yes. That's what you're-
And again, if you're talking, I have a mini excavator, a truck, and a trailer, if, if you start out that small, you're going to grow, you, it's, it's, and then you'll evolve into this business type of thing. You, you could find a way to make that work for you somehow, with our current ordinance.
Oh, I mean, we have excavation companies hiding as farms, so.
So you're just told to be on numbered highway, so you wouldn't, you couldn't use it anyways?
I agree, there's a lot of people that own a mini excavator or a skid steer nowadays, they're, they, they don't advertise themselves as a business and come to the codes office and say, hey, can I, can I do this?
Yeah.
They have an excavator that they drag around on weekends and make a couple hundred bucks.
Yeah, those, I mean, that's where I see the conflict becoming.
Hi. So I'm starting, I'm coming in the middle sort of of this issue, and so first, I do want to say sometimes no is an answer, by the way, so let's establish that.
Absolutely.
But regardless of that, what I want to know is, when you first started proposing another approach to this ordinance, who are we trying to protect? Who are we trying, is it the, the actual existing people living in an area, or the people having businesses in the area, or are we trying to help people who want to expand a business? So I don't know-
It's all of the above.
It's all the above?
Yeah.
So, so we, we did have a business approach us, I don't want to bring that into the equation, though. We're not talking about one business here. So we did have a business approach us-
Yeah.
-about doing an expansion. That got us thinking, is there a reason why this couldn't be an allowed use? But the reason we're putting protections is to protect the neighbors. I mean, zoning is put in place to protect the general public, i.e. the neighbors. So we're, we're doing, we're having this discussion to try to see if our ordinance might be too restrictive. If you guys feel it's not too restrictive, you are 100% correct, no is an answer.
Yeah, and I wanted to make sure, protect, like, the planning board is to, to look at the future, how we plan our town, and so if we just let things get out of control when we have an opportunity, then we're not planning, we're just letting things happen. So I'm okay with looking in the future of decisions that we make that don't hurt people who are currently residing in their properties. So sure, from that perspective, let's look at this ordinance, ordinance to give people opportunities, if they have a business, to how you would, that's what it reads, how you're going to allow them to exist, the 15-foot high, the 20-foot buffer along the road, 100-foot setbacks, that all makes sense, and also connected to their residence. So if they split off their residence, they know, now it's becoming a parking lot, right? It's no longer, the business is no longer connected to their residence. And so that's something that I don't see here, if you do in five years-
But no, that's what we're talking about tonight. We currently have a provision-
Yes.
-that allows excavation and general contractors on five acres or more-
Yes.
-if it's accessory to a single-family house.
So.
Tonight, we are saying we're creating a new category-
All right.
-that would allow it not be an accessory.
I got you.
That is what we're here for tonight.
So if you, if you start a business-
Yes.
-and you live there, and all of a sudden you want to retire-
Right.
-you cannot sell the other property.
Currently.
Currently.
And now we're saying, maybe we, we, all right.
And the business is established-
Right.
-but you can't operate it because you don't own the single-family home.
Interesting.
Yeah, and I'd like to bring up another point, it's only allowed in industrial, what were the two zones? The ones with almost-
Airport, industrial.
Almost no lots and no excavation company is going to be able to own a frickin' lot in that zone.
So it is allowed in the urban zone as a conditional use. So it's, it's the industrial zones plus the urban zone as a CU, currently.
Currently, and it's permitted-
Which has zero big enough lots to store equipment, so like-
Well, we don't have this provision in there yet.
Currently, it's allowed in the urban zone as a conditional use without any specific provisions for excavation. They would just fall under the eight generic provisions for conditional use. We, we added more because it's been the discussion of the planning board for the last couple of years that we don't understand why we have conditional uses, that we don't actually have guidelines on. So we're, we're trying to listen and, and give you the guidelines to, to have for the conditional use.
So in the, in the scenario of the person that had a business and wants to sell their home, do all these things apply now, then the person that they, let's say they sell the home, and then what do they do with the business? They keep the business or sell the business? Does the person now have, do they-
I think, I don't think we should focus on, on that. I mean, that's, that's a all hypothetical scenario.
Okay.
This might be, I own a 10-acre lot and I want to open an excavation business. I never lived there, I never plan on living there, I simply want to move my excavation business to a X amount of lot in the RR or RMU zone. Let's not confuse it with other standards, please.
All right, well, that's fine, there's a lot, there's a lot of provisions here that are challenging for anyone putting a business, as far as the municipal services, the vehicle, pedestrian, traffic roads, I mean, there's, there are tight provisions on where you're going to put your excavation business, it's not just anywhere, so.
Well, they got to have 10 acres too, right?
Well, that's what's proposed as of today, but that's, that's up to you guys to decide, that's-
You won't find much of that on 109.
Right.
We don't have a lot of 10-acre lots on 109.
Yeah, which is, I think is, is sensible.
But again, we, we put these protections to try to help the abutters.
I would like to keep-
We're trying to create that fine line of, of being business-friendly, but not give away the soul of the, of the neighbors.
I'd like to keep them consistent, because I'll bring up the scenario where the person wants to sell a lot, they have accessory use, it's on five acres already.
Now it's not conforming to-
Now it's not, you still can't sell it because 10, because we arbitrarily picked 10.
And you guys might choose five acres as the number, the 10 was just, as I started, that, that's really just a, I didn't have any basis for saying 10, I just picked that out of thin air as a conversational point.
So, I mean, my, my recommendation is, we move both to 10 or both to 5?
Please.
Okay, so just to get us on like a baseline here, so right now we're trying to allow more businesses in, that we don't currently allow. So the five acres, again, is accessory to a single family, so these could be in residential areas. So five acres right now is doable, again, because you're technically, or ideally a smaller scale excavation company. Once you want to, what we're trying to do is allow bigger excavation companies in the rural zones, but still protect the abutters and really the taxpayers, because again, if we just let these everywhere, not every road is built to handle these, like we talked about, and not everyone cares. I mean, I have personally lived near one of these contractors, and the road gets absolutely destroyed, and who do you think pays for that? The taxpayers. So we're, we're trying to allow more businesses to grow, but again, with buffering requirements and things like that, we need more acreage, or we needed an amount, I'm not going to say how much, but I just feel like, when you start building things, you don't take into consideration-
Hold on a second.
...how much you need to, to accomplish those.
So to your point, I think that's where we really should be focusing our energy, is on, is the buffering correct?
Mm-hmm.
And I think we're all pretty well set on the state road or the numbered road piece because of the way the road's built. I think if you're buffering, your buffering's going to end up dictating your size of the lot anyways. We set a minimum, it may have to be bigger just to get the buffering requirements, depending on how big your operation is.
Right, and you could have a funky-shaped 10-acre lot that won't work for it, because you can't meet any of the buffering requirements or setbacks. So, I mean, it's all based on the lot itself, which is a kind of a situational basis, you know?
Not every lot's square.
But I, I mentioned it last time, a five-acre wooded lot is better than a 10-acre field.
Mm-hmm. That's why I put a 30-foot vegetated buffer.
Yeah, and so I don't think the acreage is going to impact the road, you know, the damage to the road, that's why we have the, it needs to be on numbered lot. I just think it needs, it should be consistent.
So if we went down to five acres as the minimum lot size, is the 10, oh, sorry, is the 100-foot setback distance from a residential use still seem like enough setback? Setback does not mean buffer, it just means distance.
I'd say setback, yes, buffering, no.
So we want a bigger buffer, or?
30 feet's not much. This room is probably 30 feet wide?
Sure.
That's not a lot to have a semi-truck next to your house.
Well, it wouldn't be, it would still be 100 feet, it would just have 30 feet of buffer.
Okay.
30 feet of trees.
How many acres?
70 more feet before the house.
How many?
Property line.
You're talking about 30-foot buffer along a lot, how many feet is that? How many acreage would that, how much acreage would that be?
How big is the lot?
It really depends on how long the lot is, it's, it's hard to say. An acre is 204 by 204, a square acre is 204 by 204. But it could be, the lot could be 800 feet deep, so 30 feet at 800 feet is much more than 30 feet at 200 feet deep. So really, the, the buffer and setback will take up different acreage depending on the actual size of the lot.
Also, I think if we're being honest, I'm not sure how we'll be implementing the buffering requirement other than a registered noise complaint from the neighbor, and then we would go out and measure. There's already a provision in the conditional use that the proposed use will not create nuisances to neighboring properties because of odors, fumes, glare, hours of operation, noise, vibration, fire hazard, or unreasonably restricted access to light and air. So that's already in there.
Mm-hmm.
If they have a complaint right now about the noise, we just don't have any number to tell the business, okay, this is what you guys need to do to remediate the noise. So by putting in a number in the conditional use, we can at least verify, yeah, there's a noise complaint, you don't have 30 feet here, you have to, you have to plant more trees to make 30 feet buffer.
If it said minimum 30 feet, this way-
Sure, it does say.
It says that, it says, the next line says that there's-
Minimum of 15 feet and 30 feet wide.
I get you, minimum 15 feet, right, and 30 feet wide, so it's, it's minimum of both.
Right.
If you're talking about excavation, are you talking about gravel pits or anything?
No.
That is extraction.
That's extraction, okay.
Right, so an excavation-
All different discussion.
-contracting business, they're not really doing anything on site other than storing their construction equipment.
Okay.
And they might turn it on and let it warm up for a little bit, so it's idling in place, that's why we call it the staging, parking or staging area, but then they're basically rolling out and going to work somewhere else.
What's the buffering for solar farms?
Buffer for what?
Solar farms, because it'd make, it'd make me laugh if the solar farms is more than this.
So solar farms fall under the generic buffering, you guys have imposed slightly larger buffers on some solar projects, but generically, they fall under just the, the normal setback for the zone that it's in, the underlying zone.
The conditional uses for a ground-mounted solar system or utility solar system in the rural residential zone shall minimize impacts on soils and shall provide an analysis that demonstrates it is not economically feasible to extend a compact pattern of residential development because of the physical and natural features, and will minimize impacts on existing abutting residential development or residential zones. Those are the stated conditions.
So I really, I do appreciate the quantitative-
Yeah.
-number we're adding here and not just saying, planning board, figure out what you want to do.
I know, that's what-
I like this better.
Now we're, we're figuring it out now, but hopefully that makes it easier in the future.
We're, we're trying to give you guys the tools you're asking for to work with.
Yeah, absolutely.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess from, from my opinion, the, the lot size, 510, I understand what Jace is saying about consistency between the two different scenarios, but I think a lot of it's going to be driven by the lot that's available and the buffering requirement. The buffering is going to really, I think is really going to set what size the, we need to have a minimum, but then we need, the buffering's going to set what the size is, and that's what's, that's what we really care about, right, is driving that, that impact to the neighbors.
And just to, just to make a comment, to get into the excavation business is very, very expensive. We're not going to have a million-
Bucks.
-excavation contractors flock into Sanford because we changed our ordinance. It's, our ordinance is pretty restrictive as it is, and put that on top of the cost to get into the excavation business. This isn't something that Jace just wakes up tomorrow and says, I don't like my current job, I'm going to, I'm going to go spend a million bucks and buy an excavator.
Steve was powerful.
Yeah, I know, maybe I do.
Maybe he does, but.
So, the other thing is, like, most equipment's offsite, like, you, you have an excavation job, the excavator's on site for weeks or days, or, you know, it's not back and forth. The other piece of this, because I've seen excavation companies, they stockpile material. That requires a different, whole different permit.
That's a whole different bargaining, this is-
So, because in that case, you'd have trucks running back and forth all day.
Yeah, that would be considered mineral extraction, even if they're just hauling it into store and hauling it back out.
Yeah.
Which is a whole-
Okay, because-
We're not done with that one yet either, but that's a whole nother discussion.
To just go down that path for a second, no other, other uses, like, we talked about allowing chippers in gravel pits, right? Not to go to gravel pit discussion, but those additional uses, that's not going to be included in this, like, this is really just the, the-
So the, the way the definition is worded, it's excavation and general contractor, a business that provides earth, excuse me, earth or site work, or building construction services on a contract basis at the client's site, and that stores construction equipment, heavy- trucks, or building materials and supplies outside at its place of business.
So, if you stored it inside, you wouldn't qualify as this?
I'm sorry?
If you stored it inside, you wouldn't qualify as an excavator?
Correct. We have a different category for indoor storage.
Okay.
Which is what I was trying to tell you earlier.
And, and again, it says stored materials outside, that, say that one last one more time.
Building materials.
Read the whole sentence. Can you read the whole sentence again?
I'm sorry. Um, a business that provides earth or site work or building construction services on a contract basis at the client's site and that stores construction equipment, heavy trucks, or building materials or supplies outside at its place of business.
Outside at its place of business. So, if I'm an excavator, I would bring in materials that.
Building materials.
I will say.
It says building materials.
I will say you need an inert fill permit at minimum. I went through this, I had to have, I had material dropped off on my lot to use, and I had to go through the town to get a permit for it, um, at a minimum.
I'm having a hard time hearing tonight, I didn't hear what you said.
I had to get an inert fill permit for material dropped off on my site.
Correct.
So.
But that's only if you're using, uh, fill from the sides of municipal streets.
But if you're building a driveway and you would need gravels and you would need, um, so you would need gravel and materials, that's your material that you're working with, if, if we're gonna split hairs here. So, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have drywall if you're doing excavation, but you would have building materials that you would then, that's your building material. So.
So, so again, it would not allow the storage of, of gravel and the such on the lot.
So, this guy's got a truck and somebody wants gravel, he goes to the gravel pit, loads it up, and takes it to the site and drops it.
I'm, I'm fine with that, but it, that's not.
But he doesn't drop it on that property.
But he doesn't have it stored on that property.
No stockpiles.
Perfect. As long as it's clear, cause it says that building materials, and if you're an excavator, that's your building material.
Right. That's the determination of the code enforcement officer for the municipality it's in.
Is there a definition for building materials?
There is not, I just love to talk.
We do not.
Can I revisit buffering for a second? Um, when we talk about, basically, if you wanna talk about the neighbors, they're not expecting any excavation on these lots next to them. So, when the houses were built, so let's say the house is close to the lot line, um, would we want to make a consideration for buffering in those cases? So, let's say, like, right now, we say, oh, a hundred feet plus the thirty, et cetera. But if you have a house that's really close to that lot line, would we want to take that in consideration to increase that buffering to keep that neighbor safe from noise, et cetera?
A roll in scale depending on how close the infrastructure is?
Yeah.
Well, cause it just seems weird, if you can't store it more than a hundred, you have to be a hundred feet away from the boundary, why you can't increase the buffer? You're not supposed to be, they're not supposed to be using that area anyways.
So, in theory, you could increase the buffer up, up to a hundred feet.
Yeah.
With, with the.
But would that be enough?
There's a whole bunch of.
They're not doing excavation onsite, they're just starting their equipment and driving it offsite to go do work. Fuel's real expensive, they're not just gonna sit there and idle it all day.
But I, if somebody has a single family house now with a business on it, and they wanna either sell that property or lease it, I don't think they're gonna give two craps about buffering.
But they would have to, because the ordinance requires it.
Or it allows for an easement, so they could put an easement in place prior to selling off the house. And then whoever buys that house has to abide by that.
Buys it with easement.
Yep.
I'm comfortable with that. So, I'm okay with making it bigger and then having the owner having to get the neighbor's consent to, um.
Shorten it.
Shorten it.
That's how it's written right now.
Yeah, I, I, I like that.
Thank you. I like that.
All right, so what, what are needed to be then? If not thirty, what?
I was gonna say fifty, but that's the difference, if you're gonna have a hundred foot setback from the property line, that's half the setback.
Can the driveway be within that hundred feet?
Yes, it's just the parking or staging areas, so yes.
Which is the whole business, pretty much.
It's just, you know, you're gonna still have to move equipment on and off of site, so.
But it's on a numbered highway, so it stands to reason that there's gonna be heavy traffic all on that highway already?
I wasn't made more speak, it was, if we made it a hundred feet, now your driveway has to be a hundred feet in, and that was, that wasn't the intent, the intent was a storage area.
Correct.
Cause, cause in reality, you, you, you have to drive through it to get to the road.
Yeah.
So, we, we would have to allow a driveway.
So, the buffering is on the storage area. If your driveway goes up within ten feet or whatever's allowed by the zone, that would be okay?
Yes, the buffering is just on the outdoor staging or parking areas for equipment.
That makes way.
Does anybody else have any, any thoughts on that distance? Fifty, thirty?
It depends on how big the lot is. I mean, if the lot is smaller and you're gonna use more of the property, you could be hitting both ends of the property and.
But if somebody's gonna be looking for a property to do this, they're gonna have to find a property that meets the requirement. And that's the point, that's what we're trying to do, is set the standard, say, and, you know, these are the minimum requirements, so if you wanna use this, kinda like Jace, he can't, he doesn't meet any of these requirements, so he couldn't use his field to do this.
You're saying a smaller lot might need more of a buffer all the way around instead of on one, one side?
No, not really, because you could just put it all to one corner, a bigger lot, you could put it all to one corner of the property, and you'd still be just as close. That's why I really don't think five or ten acres is gonna make a difference.
Yeah, well, that's, that was what I was saying, Lenny, is the, the lot size is sort of irrelevant, because it depends on the size of your, if you, if you have a really small outfit, you can meet all the other requirements, you're fine. Now, you can't grow that, because if you decide to make it bigger, store more equipment, you now are going to encroach on those, the hundred foot setback and the thirty foot, thirty or whatever it's gonna end up being, uh, buffering.
Minimum height, fifteen feet, that seems pretty high.
Tall? I don't know, I didn't wanna see straps.
Would we put a, like, an eight foot fence or something?
Could be, so I have vegetated buffer, I didn't put fence in here, we could add a provision, vegetated buffer or a fence?
Well, yes.
The fence is not gonna be thirty feet.
Fifteen feet high is pretty high for a buffer.
Can you even buy fifteen foot tall saplings from a ministry?
It's a lot of money.
Yeah, wow.
But again, we're trying to preserve the rural character of, of, of the zone, where this is, this is for the rural zone, so we're, we're trying to protect the neighbors. Yes, I understand to, to plant a fifteen foot tall buffer is not a cheap and difficult.
If the logger comes in and clears all the logs on the, you know, trees on the side of the road.
Hypothetically, yes. And what kind of trees could we plant there?
But, but again, that's a decision the property owner will have to make, is it worth the investment to plant this buffer if they want the business there?
But, well, you're talking trees, I mean, how close do they have to be?
So, we don't define buffer currently. Um, in the future, um, we, we need to, um, but in, like, mineral extraction, the discussion dragged on for six years, and part of that was because of how do you define the buffer? That, that was a heavy topic of debate, it's still a heavy topic of debate. So, it's, um, it's, it's a very hard thing to define reasonably. To me, a buffer could be, if Alex was, if Alex was standing there and I was standing here, we can't see each other. That could be one person's definition of a buffer. It could be if Alex is there and I'm here, we can kinda make out there's a body there, but we can't see who it is. That might be a buffer to somebody. So, I mean, buffer is a very arbitrary term.
But I think if you're living next to a business like that, you may want a fence.
Sure.
You don't wanna see what's going on next door.
There's nothing prohibiting them from installing a fence. That's, that's an option. There's nothing in the ordinance that says anybody can install a fence.
There's nothing in here about a fence, though, is there?
We're saying there's nothing stopping the residential use from installing their own fence. We also currently don't have anything in here requiring the business to install a fence, but we could make that a provision.
I mean, if that's something you guys want, sure, that's, that's a provision that could be added.
It's, it's hard to have a vegetative buffer and a fence.
I would think it would be an or.
Right.
Option.
Yeah, either or.
But.
I think for a rural area, you'd want the vegetation.
I would.
Yeah.
So, so that's the thing, a fence in the middle of the woods
Yeah.
looks horribly out of place.
Right.
We're, we're trying to protect the neighbors as much as we can.
But I think if the neighbors truly want a fence, they can just.
But if it's in the woods, there's a vegetated buffer.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So, you're not gonna put a vegetated buffer and a fence, cause you meet the requirement. This was just an opportunity, and maybe we put something in, it's, the standard's a minimum, right? So, the, the, having a fence to protect the neighbor could be part of the discussion when an actual project comes in front of us.
Right.
Or you could say a lieu of a buffer or vegetation.
So, potentially for the buffer, and you could put standards like is there, and then you could put
Yeah.
or, or other options as determined by
The plan.
the planning board or the project or the, or, or individual circumstances, or you could word it such that, uh, you guys could make the determination that a fence is the best option. Cause you're right, if we.
Would that be condition?
If we bring up Hansons Ridge Road per se, there's a, there's a bunch of fields. You could buy a hundred acre field, wanna put this in the middle of it, and a fence might be the best option there.
I'd personally make the person plant trees, but.
So, maybe, maybe leave some leeway to make it vegetated buffer and/or, uh, other alternatives as determined by the planning board.
I, I think this encourages.
Just like that.
To.
I like that.
I was gonna say, I think this encourages it towards, towards a wooded lot, which is actually better. Um, being in a field with the noise of the trucks and so forth is not ideal. So.
Jack, itching to say something?
Years ago, on Cape Cod, they sold property with seasonal water views. What did that mean? When the leaves fell off in the winter, you might be able to see the ocean. So, I mean, when the leaves fall off, I mean, it depends on how close the trees are together to block that.
Absolutely. And if they're hardwood or softwood.
Right. Yeah, pine trees.
You, you plant all hemlock trees, it's a year-round buffer. You plant all oak trees or maple trees, it's a six-month-a-year buffer.
I'm just gonna say that the neighbor's gonna wanna be good, because they don't want code enforcement there all the time. You know, mo- most companies wanna avoid code enforcement being on their property, so. But I, I.
Your delight, Alex.
Oh, they love you, Alex.
So, Aaron, I think that we pray, add something that talks to the flexibility, flexible options for that buffering.
Can I run it by you now?
Please.
Yep.
Buffering, number four. All outdoor staging or parking areas for equipment used by the excavation contracting business is buffered by a vegetated buffer, a minimum of fifteen feet high and thirty feet wide, or other buffering and/or fencing options as determined by the planning board. The planning board may request a larger buffer if necessary for noise remediation.
I like it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Perfect, that one's done. Can we get maybe a show of hands on the change to a minimum lot size of five acres?
I don't, it doesn't matter to me.
Doesn't matter to me either.
Because I think. The other conditions are gonna.
Cause the other conditions will buffer it.
Yep.
Yeah.
And this keeps it consistent with the existing uses. Okay.
So, I think I counted four, correct?
I counted four.
Yeah, one, two, three, four.
Which is the majority. Okay, five acres. The minimum lot size, so, again, they have to meet all these other conditions. If something comes in and it's clearly not going to.
I just can't picture where this lot would be.
Well, and that's the good. And that's the good thing with these conditions, that now we're putting conditions in that, you know, we're not gonna waive buffering just because you can't get it to, with a five acre lot. Pick a different lot, right, that's.
It'd be like two oh two, um, Oak Street in Springvale, cause that's Route sixteen, I mean, eleven A, sorry, um, ninety-nine, uh, Route four.
Jack, were you the one who didn't, you want ten? Was it you?
Yeah, ten would be fine with me.
I like ten.
Can I just ask for you, what is the difference between five and ten?
Five acres.
He just set him up.
Did I get that right?
You got it.
Excellent, excellent. Um, no, just for your, your personal opinion.
It, I, I don't know, I, there's probably not a lot of ten acre lots on these highways that are for sale.
Oh, so you're just trying to just mix it all together?
Yeah.
Okay. Makes sense.
The bigger the better.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that, thank you.
I just think the use is more rural than industrial. I mean, we're limiting this type of business literally to the industrial zoning, where there's almost no lots available.
No, no, no. In the industrial areas, it is either permitted or permitted with review.
Yeah, I know.
These are conditional use
I know.
provisions. So, you could technically during your review of the permitted with review, refer to these, but these actually refer to the urban and rural zones.
Yeah, no, I know. Uh, I'm just saying, like, if you're in this type of business, our zoning really is kinda terrible, because you're competing with an industri-, you know, to buy industrial land, which is extremely expensive, extremely hard to find, basically not.
It's a storage lot.
Yeah, we're sending all the, all these businesses to Lebanon, is what we're.
Sure, right, so this would be, that would be, going down to five acres is more business friendly towards contracting businesses, sure.
All right.
We will appear more business friendly, even though we don't really have anything to offer.
Except tax.
So, is there any other discussion on the act, on the, on the words of this ordinance?
Nope.
Looks great, sounds great.
Beautiful.
Good job.
Excellent job.
Do we have a motion to, to send this to council?
Council? Motion to send it to council.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six, zero. Whew, all right.
Thank you all.
So, moving on to the next item, uh, public hearing for the amendment to the zoning ordinance allowing manufactured housing in all zones that allow single-family dwellings per state law HP two eleven and LD three thirty-seven, signed into law March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
So, I'll, I'll do a precursor again. Uh, so this is, um, this is a bill that came out of the Legislative Board, uh, two months or so ago at this point. Um, it's following the footsteps of LD two thousand and three. It's a bill designed to promote affordable housing in Maine. Um, essentially, it says that municipalities, uh, should amend their ordinances to allow a mobile-style manufactured home anywhere a single-family home is allowed within the community. So, we currently allow mobile-style manufactured homes in the RR and RMU zone and the RD zone, not on numbered highways. Um, that's how our current ordinance is written. Uh, according to the state, we can no longer have those provisions. We would have to amend our ordinance to allow a mobile-style manufactured home. Anywhere a single-family home is permitted to be built.
So, we have to.
This is a law similar to two thousand and three that says we have to, correct?
So, is a manufactured home a mobile home?
Yes.
So, manufactured home is a, is a term that actually covers modular-style homes and mobile-style homes. I, I keep hesitating when I say mobile, because we're not supposed to use the word mobile home or, or trailer anywhere. Um, but it can get confusing, because a modular-style home is considered a manufactured home.
Is that like the house they put the SRTC built?
That would be considered a modular. So, this doesn't pertain to those. A mobile home is what I refer to as a HUD home. Um, so, the difference between a mobile and a modular essentially is, a modular is built in a, in a factory, a controlled environment, placed on a trailer for transport, taken off of the trailer, off of the trailer, and put onto a foundation.
Right.
A HUD home, a mobile home, is built on. A HUD home, a mobile home, is built on a steel frame that stays with it forever.
It's towed.
It has a HUD sticker on it. It's, it's, they're two completely different animals, both under the manufactured housing term. So, um, I'm gonna continue to use the word mobile even though it's frowned upon because I just need to differentiate between the two.
Does this apply to like tiny homes on trailers?
So a tiny home is regulated under a different standard. A tiny home is not considered a manufactured home.
Even if it's built on a big trailer?
Even if it's built on a trailer. To be considered a mobile slash manufactured home, it has to have the HUD sticker on it. That's why I call them HUD homes.
Yes, so in short, the legislation is requiring that manufactured homes are allowed on any lot that a single-family housing is allowed. Uh, municipalities are not allowed to restrict the manufactured housing of a certain age or manufactured date, which is one of our provisions currently. And municipalities may not restrict manufactured housing to zones where mobile home parks are allowed. We cannot pick just one zone that allows it and, and say we meet the ordinance. It has to be any zone that allows single-family housing on any lot. We may, we may create some design criteria for manufactured housing, which we do have in place right now as far as a sloped roof. The definitions are all on the back of the sheet that I gave you. Um.
Foundation.
On the very end, other mobile homes, mobile homes constructed after that date which do not have a pitched, shingled roofs and exterior siding, those are currently our design. Regulations pertaining to mobile homes. So, if I may, just guide some of the discussion. There are some options should you not agree with the placement of a manufactured house on any single-family lot. Um, af-, currently, because of this provision, they are now allowed in the rural residential zone, rural mixed-use residential development and urban zone of Sanford, any lot that allows single-family house. Those are all of those lots, there's no restrictions on numbered highways, minimum lot size, buffering, any such. One option would be to evaluate if all of those zones should allow single-family houses on them. For instance, the urban zone. There are some municipalities that in their downtown business districts, urban zones, they have decided to not allow new single-family houses to be built. We do have existing single-family houses in the urban zone, those would then all become non-conforming uses, which means that they can continue to exist. Um, if it burns down, they have one year to rebuild it. They can continue some minor alterations, correct? So that would be one option. Another option is that the current design review district does not apply to single-family homes. So if you wanted to apply more stringent design review district standards to single-family homes, that would then apply to all manufactured housing in the Springvale Design District and the Downtown Design District. We could discuss the option of, of requiring design review district for all single-family homes in those design review districts. As I see it, those are generally our options? Or we just allow it to go on as the state has declared?
I forgot to mention, I, I don't expect to come out of tonight with a ready-to-write ordinance. This was really a primer to get everybody's brain going. Technically speaking, we're now a hundred percent officially in the comprehensive plan process. The, where single-family homes and, and really where everything is allowed in Sanford is, is gonna be up for debate now in the next year or so. I'm not sure we can postpone this for a year with the state, uh, but I'm not sure we can't either. So this really tonight is to get the, the conversation started. I'm not expecting to come out of tonight with an answer, just so you guys know. If we do, great, but not, not an expectation.
I don't think it makes sense to ban single-family homes in the center of town just to keep out modulos, I don't think that makes sense to me.
Okay, so hold on before we do this, right, this is still a public hearing, so we have to do that, let's get that out of the way. Uh, I'll declare the public hearing open. Uh, is there anybody on the phone or in the, or online or in the room that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance change? Is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition to this change? Is there anyone who would like to ask a question or make a comment about this ordinance change? Any last comments? Right, declare the public hearing closed.
Can I make my in-law, uh, in-law unit in a mobile home?
If the ordinance is amended to allow mobile homes anywhere, yes.
So my accessory unit?
Could, could be a mobile home. If the ordinance is amended. Or when?
So I've seen some videos where somebody claimed, to me, it looks like a mobile home, but they're considered RVs.
So they are two separate animals. Again, a mobile home under state laws defined as holding that HUD sticker.
If it doesn't have that, it's.
It's not, it's not a mobile home.
So they couldn't place that on a, on a property?
No, we, we have another ordinance that allows campers to be lived in for X amount of days per year now. So I'm not saying you couldn't have a camper that somebody lives in for a period of time. It wouldn't be a full-fledged dwelling unit.
So just looking at timing, when we get back to the debate on this, so between LD two thousand and three, which all of the work we've done, the ink's still wet on, we have no idea how that's going to impact decisions. And the comprehensive plan that we're, we've been talking about for a number of years and we're finally getting traction on. If we can stall on this, I think it makes sense. Because I think that there's a lot of, there's a lot of things up in the air for, for us to figure out as a community to do this smartly.
So Jamie can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I do think now that it's been passed by law, someone could apply, would currently be denied based on our ordinance, and then would have the avenue of going to the Board of Appeals?
It would start with the Board of Appeals. The, the risk that we do at postponing it would be somebody ends up suing the, A, I'm not even gonna say us, but if, if somebody applied in a municipality and was denied, um, because of the ordinance provisions, that person would first start with the Board of Appeals and then end up in district court. And the judge would remand it back to the town to fix the ordinance. So the, the, the possible repercussion would be somebody could challenge us and they would win because it, it is state law that we're supposed to do this.
It sounds like there's, we can't push this too far. We have to set up a schedule to address this issue, and there are some challenges that I, when I read through this. There are main uniform billing energy codes, um, that the state's trying to push, and yet there's an opportunity to put a nineteen seventy-seven mobile home in my backyard, that the, they're two opposite concepts. So that's the concern that we have to work with.
So, so when I say, I don't know if I said drag our feet, but I, what I meant was, not, not like, let's just ignore it. I say we keep working on trying to find something to get us there. Maybe we don't, we don't rush it, because I, yeah, I don't want to push anything through tonight. I think there's a lot of unanswered questions. But because we have all this other stuff going on that is going to be impacted, I think it's just smart planning for us to, one, let the ink dry on what we just finished. Start getting the ink down on the paper that we're trying to build that we are also required to do, to have a comprehensive plan that hasn't been updated in twenty-plus years. So I think it makes sense for us to, to work on this, but then in parallel also work on the other things that I think are more important. And then to consider the other, the other things that are coming down the pipe that we may not even know about yet.
This, this, um, this law appeared out of thin air. I won't say that I follow everything that's happened up in Augusta, but I, I try to keep my eye on it. And somehow this one, I didn't know about it till I got an email saying, hey, did you guys see this? So this one, I think, went through the process fairly quickly.
But we've had this conversation, when we were having the discussions, um, previously, what is that?
The hornet.
Yeah, when's this go into effect? Because that's the date it was signed. There has to be.
That's March nineteenth of this year. It's, it's in effect currently.
It's a law. It's because it was signed by the governor March nineteenth. Usually there's an effective date.
So it was effective the day, well, ninety days after it was signed on this one.
So it's still not in effect.
Not technically, it hasn't been ninety days yet, so. Any, any action of the state legislature becomes law after, after ninety days. Uh, technically, it's not a hundred percent in effect yet, but it's getting close.
Yeah, we, I mean, it's not, this is different than the previous ordinance amendment because I don't have language. We could, there's no way that we could send this directly to council right now. But we could decide if I, if you wanted me to draft language and which ordinance I would be drafting. Whether it's trying to come up with some more design elements within the manufactured housing ordinance, whether it's revising the urban zone to not allow single-family residential units. Or whether it's revising the design review district standards to apply to single-family residential homes. Those would be three options.
But it wouldn't be just mobile homes, it would be any single-family home.
Yeah.
Correct.
Now.
But at that point, it would, with the last thing you mentioned, that means any applicant for a single-family home would go through a design review process, and they could either pass muster or not.
But here's the problem, it's a recommendation.
It would still be a, an allowed use, but they might have to require different siding, uh, landscaping, different lighting.
Right, is that a requirement?
It is a recommendation from the design review committee.
Recommendation.
The planning board, and then the planning board has to rule on that recommendation, similar to how we rule on the site plan review committee recommendations.
But single families would not go to planning board, so it's a recommendation to the code enforcement officer. And under state statute, the code officer can only mandate what is mandated in the ordinance, just so it's clear.
Yeah, that's what.
So the design review ordinance is currently worded that if it goes to site plan or planning board, and if it, if it then is put on a plan, then as code officer, your community's code officers could enforce that. But a recommendation from the designer view directly to the code enforcement officer or officers is just that. Under state statute, the code enforcement officers cannot enforce a recommendation, it has to be a rule.
That's not an option. Because that just creates a lot more headaches for single-family homeowners with zero results.
And also for all of us, that's a lot of paperwork.
Yeah.
To have every single family.
And, and really, it's not just for new construction, it, the, the design review ordinance, you, you change the color of your house, or now the color of a business, you have to go before the designer view. I could say that designer view go from, let's say, three a month, so let's say forty a year to four hundred a year overnight if we make this decision. It's, it's a pretty impactful decision.
You don't think the designer view process is painful enough as it is?
No comment.
Well, in, in the future, I think our designer view ordinance needs discussion as well, but again, I'm trying to push the comp plan first because all ordinances are supposed to be based off the comp plan, so. The, the goal is to focus on the comp plan after that. Erin thinks that's her main task, but no. Um, the, that's the easy part of this goal, is, is that we're gonna have some pretty, pretty major rewrites of ordinances after that, so.
What happens to home rule, right? We have, we have a comprehensive plan, we're supposed to bill all ordinance off a comprehensive plan, and the state can come in, which I thought we had a home rule law that says we get to run our own business, and they can just overwrite everything we've done. Everything we have in place, everything that we were legally required to have in place, and they can write a law and just wipe that out.
We should recommend council sue them.
So Maine is a home rule state.
Yeah.
Some of the more recent actions of our voted elected officials have taken away what some people would consider our home rule authority on certain aspects.
Right.
Mostly when it comes to affordable housing.
Yep.
My, my unofficial comment on that is, I really wish they would let their first idea kind of play out for more than a month to see if it's working or if it needs to be tweaked, um, before we keep throwing darts at the problem. Everybody agrees we have a housing shortage, everybody agrees that the word affordable is, is nonexistent, even, even under state law, affordable isn't affordable anymore. So I really wish that we would, we would take baby steps and instead of just keep throwing darts at the world saying, maybe this will work, maybe this will work, maybe this will work. I, I, I worry sometimes about the long-term repercussions of some of these dart-throwing episodes.
Has the Maine Municipal Association come out with anything about this new law? Have they issued any guidance yet or any opinion?
They probably just got it too.
It's, it's too new for that.
I feel like we've had this conversation before.
Accessory dwelling units, probably.
Well, it was owner occupied.
Those were accessories dwelling.
That was for the accessory dwelling unit, which we did retain the requirement that one of the units, whether it's the principal unit or the accessory unit, be owner occupied.
So help my tired brain.
Yep.
So I think, last planning board meeting, I think we might have mentioned that the discussion on mobile homes is coming. But I don't believe we've had an actual discussion.
No, I don't think so, we haven't, not since I've been here.
No, and the piece for me is, you know, mobile homes on vacant lots, whatever. But when you throw in the accessory dwelling unit piece, and now every single family can have a mobile home in their backyard.
I think it's.
And just, just to make you a little bit more concerned, we got to remember our, our growth, our growth zone, you can have two accessory units.
Yeah, there you go, I was just thinking that.
It also, it doesn't have to be in the backyard.
Where can it be, oh, the front yard? In the driveway?
Make that clear.
It can be in the driveway?
It can be the principal use, it can be the only thing on the lot, there can be two.
Right.
There can be four in the growth zone, actually not two, Jamie, it's four.
So you have a mobile.
Yeah, I, I'm trying not to get my heart attack.
I'm, I'm trying to give my heart.
Ease the pain here.
Oh, just let it go, rip the Band-Aid off.
Well, because even if we don't allow single-family uses, they can still do accessory dwelling units, and it can still be a mobile home.
Wow, I can put a lot on my property.
Uh, I don't know about that because it's only in the zones that allow single-family dwelling.
No, the LD two thousand, uh, three requires us to allow accessory dwelling units.
Yes, but it doesn't require us to allow manufactured housing as accessory dwelling units.
Currently. If this changes.
This would allow that.
Yeah.
This would allow that.
Right, but J, but Jason's saying if we, if we disallow single-family housing in any zone, they would also not be allowed to do an accessory dwelling unit as a manufactured housing, because it wouldn't be allowed in that zone.
But, I mean, that's, that's.
Could ask the lawyer.
Fairly radical thinking that we're not going to allow single families in the urban zone.
They kind of force that hand for radical thinking, though.
But, but we, we have become a city. As Erin started this conversation, many cities have the provision that in the core, you don't build single families. We, we want to start promoting multifamilies.
Right.
Again, right now, our urban zone over there on the zoning map is the yellow. So I think, I personally feel when we get to comprehensive plan, our urban zone is gonna shrink some. If we recall, when the urban zone was created, we actually took six, I believe, zones and combined them into one. So our urban zone doesn't only encompass our core. And if, if we say urban zone's not gonna allow single family, I think we might have to shrink it down or create an overlay zone that says, single families are only allowed in this portion of the urban zone and not in this portion of the urban zone. To, to limit that, that focus on multifamilies not in all of what is shown currently as urban. But again, that, that's all gonna come after the comprehensive plan discussions and during the comprehensive plan discussions.
This is worse than LD two thousand and three.
Yes.
And just to try to make you guys feel better, I believe the council is gonna struggle as much as you guys are with this one. I think the city of Sanford as a whole absorbed the LD two thousand and three provisions with stride. We, I think we navigated those waters well. Um, I don't think everybody was super excited and happy. don't think everybody was super excited and happy about it, but I think we ended up with ordinances that work for both sides of that argument. I think this one is gonna be a lot more controversial.
Yes. So what would the happy medium be? I don't know.
Well, like LD 2000
I wanna say no, but we can't say no.
Currently, we can't say no, but like LD 2003, that was enacted, it was amended, it was given guidance documents, it was amended again, and finally, they gave us a firm deadline of January 1 of this year. I suspect similar is gonna happen to this once people have time to start complaining to their elected officials. I, I think we might end up with the, kind of the same evolution as we did with 2003. That one was enacted with a rush date, and then everybody's like, whoa. So I, I almost foresee this one stalling itself at, at the state level.
I kind of expect someone to push, you know, to utilize this, because that is the cheapest form of housing and provides the biggest form of profit margin for a landowner.
So manufactured housing is more expensive than it used to be. I recently issued a permit here in town for $350,000 mobile home, so they are not 50 grand like they used to be. You can buy, I think the cheapest mobile home we've issued in the last year is probably in the $85,000-ish range, just for the home itself, so they're no longer 30, 40 grand like they used to be. And they, they now make mobile homes that are, are actually well-equipped on the inside. Granite kitchens, tiled showers, so they're, they're now making what I'm gonna call well-equipped manufactured housing that isn't cheap.
But the rule says
I know.
They can have any house they want. They could go buy a used one off of somebody's back 40.
Thank you.
And that's allowed.
That's the concern. I mean, if you're talking about
Not buying $350,000 mobile homes and putting them on lots.
Exactly. Bring them up from, from HUDs in Florida, from flood zones and from hurricanes, and just start shipping these things up, because they're cheap, but buying them, there's a concern about where they're coming from, what they, 1976, 50-year-old
To help ease some of that concern, at least in current law in the state of Maine, once you move a mobile home, once, so it goes from a factory or a dealer to a lot. Once you move it, it has to meet regular code. It no longer falls under HUD code, so under current law, that as far as I know has not been amended, once a mobile home is moved more than once. It no longer falls under the much-relaxed building code that they're built under.
So then, some of the provisions can be that must, these 1976 mobile homes have to meet, you know, the current code?
They might be able to move a 1976 mobile home from wherever. But that doesn't mean they're gonna move it as is. It means they're gonna have to invest more money than that thing costs new to bring it up to regular building code, not, so there's, there's three codes in the state of Maine. There's, there's HUD homes, mobile homes, there's manufactured housing code that falls under for modular homes, and then there's the regular building code. So if you move it more than once, currently, it has to then be brought up to stick belt, you come in today and get a permit for me code, which would be almost impossible on a 40, 50-year-old mobile home.
All right, that, that's big.
So again, that, that law might be amended, too. Maybe it already has. I, I, I'm speaking from
Let's write that one down.
I will look into that before our next discussion.
Yep. I mean, I think part of the goal tonight was just get it out in the open. It's technically law right now. We had a public hearing. If any of the residents of Sanford wanted to call the state and complain or request a change, they could do so. You all can do so.
So I, I think we at least need to keep the dialogue running. I'm not saying next meeting, maybe in a month, we'll, we'll put it on an agenda again to discuss. In the meantime, we'll do some more research. You guys can do your own research if you so choose. So I, I think we at least need to keep the dialogue going to, to, to make it so that we are working towards the end goal of an ordinance.
Does it need to stay on the agenda, since we didn't actually make any?
Well, because it was a public hearing, I think we have to table it, then we can continue to discuss it.
Yeah, so it stays on
Because we had the table, we, because we had a public hearing that nobody was here for, but.
Yep.
We can close the public hearing, right?
I did close the public hearing.
So, so I definitely feel we have to continue the dialogue, not just say we're gonna look at it again May 1 of 2025. I think we will have to continue the dialogue, and if we continue the dialogue, I think we would be at least semi-protected, should somebody decide that we're, we're just some in the state. If, if I go to court and say, we're working on it, we just haven't, we, we haven't worked out the details yet, I think we'd be in a fairly good position in court.
So for just the housekeeping issue? Because, because we had a public hearing, we closed the public hearing, we're technically done. Still allowed, is it still allowed for us to re-advertise for another public hearing when we have this?
We can always
When we have a better understanding of what the ordinance is gonna look like?
We, we can always re-advertise, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't technically need a public hearing for this one. I just was already advertising for the other. Doesn't cost much to add another couple lines, and I figured if anyone wanted to join the discussion, they would have, do notice.
Opportunity, okay.
Yeah.
Right, so when we do, yeah, when we do pick this up to have a discussion as a formal document, we'll definitely want to advertise it again.
Do you want me to advertise it, even if it's not an actual ordinance language? Anytime we're discussing this, we can advertise it, or is it only when we have draft language?
I think we need to have something a little, I think we have some meat on the bones before, and kind of have a little bit of a plan ahead before, rather than just having a chaotic discussion in front of the public, which we're already doing, but.
That's fine. I think it's, it's fine, but that's fine. So next time I advertise it, it will be with draft language for an ordinance after we've already had a workshop or some sort of discussion.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so from our draft agenda, we did have one other item, but it has been removed. So Planning Directors' Report?
Uh, I'll keep it short and sweet. Everything is still going smoothly. Erin officially sent out emails today, getting the steering committee meeting set up for this month, so our, our official first steering committee will be at the end of this month. We're still working on details, whether that's gonna be live via Zoom, whether it's gonna be recorded, whether it's gonna be, we give notes to the council once a month, so we're still working out all the, the details as to how the information is gonna be disseminated to the general public. We'll keep you updated on that once those final decisions are made. Super excited that we're, we're finally, finally here. It's been talked about for a long, long time, even, even with me sitting here, it's been talked about now for a year and a half, so very, very excited that we're officially underway. Our consultant came to town, what, three weeks ago, maybe a month? That we, that was hired for the market study, so they are actively doing their work, which is one of the pieces that Erin needs to help to do her job, so we are, we are 100% officially underway, which is very exciting to see.
Did we formally, did we get any feedback from the council on our choices for participation from the board?
That, we have not, we, I'm working with the city manager on, on, our, our first meeting was actually supposed to be last week. We didn't get all of the committee members' the list organized, so we, we missed our first one. We're, we, we're not missing the second one. We might not have a full list if it hasn't been decided, but we're, we're having the meeting nonetheless with whoever has been chosen at that point.
May 22nd?
May 22nd, yes. I sent you an, an email today, Jack. It's in your inbox. We're joking.
Yeah, it was, but I did get copied on another email you sent out to a bunch of
So you have the email, just in a different?
Well, I get it, I, I must have been blind copied on one email. The second email I got, it was blank.
I'm not sure. I, I will resend it to you in the morning, if you want. I can send you the calendar invite, would you like that? That might have been the
Oh.
But it's the calendar invite, so you can add it to your calendar. I might have done that for you.
You'll also send it to Jack and Lenny, or, no, Jack and Lenny, but Jase?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
They were listed on that blank.
It's not an email.
We may have to check.
So the blank email was actually a calendar invite, so if you
Just hit accept.
No, go to your calendar direct.
Well, I had a Win Dad file in the bottom, but it was all HTML bullshit.
Okay.
That's calendar.
That has to do with the email browser that you're currently using, I think, but we can work on that, Jack. Sorry for not putting any text in there.
Just to make you guys aware, the city council had a discussion, last city council meeting, about potentially enacting an ordinance for campgrounds. The discussion last, well, two weeks ago, was just a direct staff to, to write an ordinance for further review. They voted to write the ordinance for further review, so that is going to city council May 7, next Tuesday, for first read, and if it makes it through that process, it will go two weeks later for, for enactment if city council so chooses. That would be a retroactive moratorium to postpone any applications on campgrounds for a period of up to six months to give you guys as the planning board time to modify our campground ordinance and then have the city council approve that. I'm, I'm not positive which way it's going yet. It, it looks like it might pass the moratorium, but I'm not 100% sure of that yet. There was, it was a pretty lengthy discussion at the last meeting. We still have projects coming in, not as fast as six months ago, but they are still rolling in, and Erin's got her hands full with the comprehensive plan stuff, so it's okay if, if they don't roll in at four a week like they were at one point. We're comfortable with a couple things on every agenda, so. I think I'm good. Erin, did you have anything to add?
Just that I have also posted in the Sanford-Springville News that we are looking for volunteers to be on the steering committee from a residential standpoint, residents, business owners, anyone from Sanford that doesn't currently work for the city of Sanford or sit on a public board, would be very much welcomed, so if you know of anyone who wants to nominate, it'll be running again in this week's Sanford-Springville News, and we have a press release planned for next week, so hopefully drumming up some interest prior to that May 22nd date, but I'll take them at any point, honestly, so.
Alex, Matt, anything you'd like to add? Jan?
No, that's my job.
Nope. All right, communications. I'll just, you know, good lengthy discussion. I think it was, I think it was a good debate, and I think we got, we made some headway on some things. Not everything, but I think we're made good, we made good progress, so I appreciate it, appreciate the, the candid discussion, so. Any other comments from anybody? Take away Crystal.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor? Six, zero.